All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the August 16, 2022 Order of Education. We're meeting at 7:00 p.m. Coming, welcome to the table. Leading to you, my head office.
Mr. Harari.
Here.
Mr. Beck. Mr. Valla. Mr. Mazzano.
Here.
Mr. Montes.
Here.
Mr. Plaza.
Here.
Mr. Tridio.
Here.
All right, couple things. Corbin had established Board Member Dexter notifying you she's not going to be here tonight. Yeah, partner. What else? Second.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands my nation under God, universal, the great, the universal.
Mr. Barari, can we read the mission statement?
Sure. The mission of Norwich School District 80 is inspiring educational excellence in a nurturing environment.
Thank you, sir. Celebration of success. Who wants to hear it?
So we would like to celebrate Jive School, our new teachers. We do have our fifth grade math teacher, Ms. Sydney Shag. And we do have our eighth grade science teacher, Ms. Penzi Bala, Bala.
Bala.
Bala. So we'd like to celebrate them. And also, we would like to celebrate that all the new, all of our new staff and our parent professionals have all been trained on CPI, crisis prevention and intervention. Uh, so we're excited for everyone to train on verbal de-escalation techniques. So, thank you.
And adding to that celebration for new staff, um, I'd like to welcome Allison Cornell, our Assistant Principal, sitting right next to me. And, uh, also in the audience, we have Kelly Combs, one of our self-contained special education, uh, teachers. And as you saw in the presentation that was kind of just scrolling a few minutes ago, those are some of the other new faces, some of whom, uh, we're not able to make it tonight, but we're, uh, excited to welcome into the district.
Also would like to celebrate Mr. Jack Melty, who will be our PBIS Coordinator for the district as well.
Okay. Do I need to read the board? I'll just echo those statements. Welcome aboard, welcome all new staff and teachers. We're happy to have you and welcome to the ceremony. Also, just wanted to take a minute for the maintenance department and everybody who's worked here this summer time, getting their things ready. Uh, they look great, school starts coming up here, so we're excited about it. So everybody's hard work never goes unnoticed and we thank everybody for it. Moving on to our action item. That is the board of consideration, who go ahead and read the agenda as presented or potentially modified. Any discussion from the board? Without any discussion of questions, I'll ask for motions or approve the agenda as now presented.
Motion.
Frank Correa.
Yes.
Mr. Plaza.
Yes.
Mr. Montes.
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano.
Yes.
Mr. Valla.
Yes.
Mr. Harari.
Yes.
Okay, motion, that's clear. I'd like to recognize our visitors tonight, thank you for being here. Correspondents for the district. There is no correspondence for the board since last week. Public participation. Who would check the sheet for us? While he's doing that, Michelle or anybody, anything, come in and give an email.
No, I did not receive one.
There is none. No sign of public participation. Moving on to four requests. Uh, we have two requests since the last board meeting, and I'll read them. Again, they'll be posted on our website as soon as possible, typically tomorrow at some point. Request number one, which is dated August 4th of this year by Mr. Workless. Requesting the list of the following information for all employees and orders towards 80. First name, middle name, last name, title of job, phone, email address, location, and location code. Request number two dated August 9th of this year by Julian Robb, uh, which requests current contracts with all entities providing janitorial maintenance and/or cleaning services and crewing all related such as amendments and memoranda of understanding. Again, those will be posted tomorrow in the public presentation. Uh, our tentative budget for fiscal year 2023.
I'd also invite and welcome Heather Schelling, who is our financial consultant to the op as well. As we prepare the presentation. Thank you. At this time of the year, uh, it, we, is the time of the year we bring the proposed budget, which we will ask the board to, uh, take action on tonight as a tentative budget. And then we'll bring it back to you in September as our final budget for the 20 fiscal year 23. So, um, want to go over a couple of things that are new for the 2223 budget. As far as personnel goes, we have two new positions in the district. We have a new ELL position and a new special education positions, positions. The special education position is a third grade level, uh, that is just to meet students IP needs. And our ELL teacher, um, is primarily at LEED. And that is because there are numbers of students who qualify for English language learning services. That's that's the number that the state does require us to have another ELL teacher. So we currently have ELL teachers that are service students in Spanish, Ukrainian, and Polish, and Russian. In addition, we're looking at four additional pair, uh, four additional parent professionals, uh, and those, uh, main purposes students support. Parent professionals in the classroom, parent professionals in self-contained classrooms, and parent professionals in, in some cases, uh, one-to-one with students. We also, the budget for 2223 includes, um, all curriculum, best practices for programming in all subject areas. We're always looking at our best practices in ELA, in math, in social studies, in science. Particularly this year, we'll be focusing on social studies and science, um, in our, in our program areas. It also includes our latest offer of salary insurance for negotiations. We are currently negotiating the collective bargaining agreement with the, um, with the teacher agreement. And the budget that you're looking at and going to see is includes the latest offer, um, for salary insurance. I don't think I can speak to what that is, um, since that is not some, not finalized yet, but just know that those amounts are in there. And then for professional development, it has, um, some training for our teachers and our parent professionals. We already started some of that this month. In August, we brought in, as, uh, Mr. Becky had mentioned, we have CPI training, which is our crisis prevention, uh, intervention training and de-escalation, uh, for student, um, student needs. We've already had that for, um, our new teachers, our parent professionals. We've also been bringing in our grade levels in August and our co-teaching teams in August for, for professional development as well and working on our, um, professional learning communities. And then finally, it has our complete projects in our facilities plan, which also includes the bond and includes, um, any of the, um, SFR funds that we're using for buildings as well. Um, it also, you'll see in the 2223 budget for FY23, a summarizing cost. Our click insurance, which is our risk management insurance, has gone up 18%. Transportation, uh, which is only for our special education students, and our after-school opportunities has gone up 5.9%. Our custodial services has gone up 5%. Utilities that we've heard have gone up 5 to 10%, in most cases, that's closer to 10%. And insurance, uh, health, life vision, dental is all gone up 8.7% this year. I know this is not something that, um, everyone is feeling, but I think it's important for us to keep this in mind as we're looking at the FY23 budget. Everyone is feeling this in their own homes and we are feeling this in our school district as well. The increase of things that we can't control. We do have, um, uh, federal dollars that will be in the final budget that you will see. The budget that we are looking at today, the tentative budget, we've actually pulled out all of our rate dollars. See what the district funds are. Couple of grants that, or the grants that were all mentioned today, we have the Cures Grant, which is an opportunity for after-school activities for our students. Our board has been interested in wanting to give back to students who went through COVID and wanting to give them some extra opportunities. The SFR grants, which, uh, as you know, there's been SFR 1, SFR 2, and now SFR 3, which is the ARP grant. SFR 1, we use, uh, for, to end the digital divide and purchase Chromebooks, um, back when in 2020. SFR 2, we've used about half of at this point. Most of it so far has been for, um, additional technology in the classrooms, the interactive boards that we've used it for, um, some COVID, response to COVID supplies that we purchased through the, uh, last year, um, substitutes, uh, several different things that we use that money for. We are going, looking at using that money for an additional social worker, which I'll speak a little bit more about. Um, using it for professional development, student extensions, and then of course, uh, some money for building projects that we so need to be funding too. We have the community, uh, grant, which is our PBIS grant. Um, and in that grant, we are hiring a PBIS coordinator, um, and putting together PBIS systems, community partnerships. We're working with the Eisenhower Library, we're working with West 40, which is our regional office of education. We're working with NAMI, the National Association of Mental Health. And, uh, now we've added Ridgewood High School to the group and, um, oh, we added someone else to the group just recently. So we're really working together in our community to, uh, have, uh, people more aware of mental health and just to have a healthy community. You'll be hearing a lot more about the PBIS, uh, community grant soon. And then, uh, as was just recently announced, the state to release a matching grant for the maintenance grant. Once again, typically this is every two years, however, they did release it for this year again. And this is a matching grant up to, uh, $50,000. We haven't brought that to you yet, but we will be doing that soon. Another thing that is important for us to note at this point is our, our fund balances. Um, a- as you may be aware, the Cook County is going through a three-year evaluation process and they haven't finished that yet and they're delayed on when they're sending out the tax bills. We are very heavily reliant on local taxes. We do receive some money from the state, our evidence-based funding, our EDF funding, we receive from the state, but it is very small amounts of money each month. Um, so if, if you don't receive tax dollars, which we typically would see now and in the fall, and if they are actually delayed, what we're going to see is a, a decrease of our cash, what we have on hand. And that is how we make this, that's how we bear this. And if we start up in September, October, that amount of money that we have currently right now will start to go in the bank. Now, it's important for you to keep in mind that it's not because we have this budget or that we've had any kind of, um, errors in our figures. It is just simply because we are not receiving our tax bills in a timely manner as we normally do. So we have a couple of options. We can do an inter-fund transfer for working cash, which would allow us to take money out of working cash and put into the funds that are needed, put it into the constant need of funds. However, we only have $2.6 million worth of taxes right now, which will fund us about two months. And then if the tax dollars are very, very delayed into December and January, we are going to have to look at, uh, borrowing money in order to, uh, sustain our expenses. Um, I know that, uh, actually, I don't remember her first name, Quitsper? Uh, no, not Quitsper, I'm sorry. Um, Preckwinkle has worked with banks in order to find some low interest rates. I think we'd be working with, uh, one of the areas we've worked with on the bond with low interest rates. However, this is something that we're going to be bringing to you in the next couple of months. We'll be looking very carefully at what our fund balances are, what kind of money that we get in. If people are paying the taxes, obviously we do get that. However, if taxes are, um, household and banks aren't, aren't paying them until they're due and it might, you know, end up being January, then I think we're going to have to really look at our fund balances during this year. That is everything I have for the tentative budgets. Any questions from the board? Dr. Schelling, would you like to come up? Here is our current actuals for the 2122 year and then the tentative budget for the 2223 year.
Yeah, and, uh, I just want to follow up on a couple of things that, um, Shell said. Um, the delay in taxes is due to Chicago. Um, every, you know, it's a triennial and Chicago was way behind. Uh, and so they don't anticipate them coming out, uh, with those bills until December. The other, um, magic date for the district is December 1st. That's when our bonding is new. So if we run out of intergovernmental, uh, loans from our working cash fund, we would need to do something as early as December 1st, because that's a payment you can't miss, okay? Um, and the other thing is, is that the working cash fund can only be, uh, loaned to those funds which have a tax levy. So, um, and we don't have any problems in our capital fund, so it's really a non-issue. Um, so when you look at the different funds, transportation is in, uh, pretty good shape. Um, so, uh, and operation and maintenance has a, a nice fund balance. Probably the education fund will need to do the largest loans because its balance is the lowest with respect to, um, the expenses that are incurred each month. So when you look at, um, the revenue for, um, next year, Michelle hit on it. Um, 1.4% for the CPI, and then you saw all those expenses, that's the differential. You see when you look up here, you see a slightly, um, deficit budget per se, still a healthy fund balance. Um, and the other thing is that we just got notification that our increase for, um, our evidence-based funding, a grant, which is the big one that we get from the state, it's 1.2 million dollars basically, went up $30,000. So it pays basically for one parent, you know? So we just aren't, as she said, um, we just don't get a lot of money from the state. Um, the, the grants that we're getting now are, um, very helpful in getting a lot of one-time things done. Um, the other thing is, is that, so if you look at the fund balance, uh, you'll notice that we're decreasing from about 5.8 to 5.1. The additional $400,000 is, um, quite as a transfer from Operation Maintenance Fund to, um, Capital Projects Fund. We talked about that at an earlier board meeting. Um, and it's a placeholder. It, if it doesn't need to be done this year, we won't move it this year. But if you, the board is identifying, uh, some key projects which may not all be paid for out of life safety or the funds we currently have from the bond issue, then we would identify those projects and move that money or a portion of it to pay for those. Um, if you look at the, uh, if you look at the sheet, you'll also see there are still healthy balances in capital projects and there's still, um, because what we're trying to do is spend, um, both, uh, our life safety money as much as we can, so we can get as many of the projects that you would like to do besides the infrastructure out of our capital projects fund. Just remember that we have a timeline for that though. So that timeline is April of '24 roughly. Um, so next summer and fall, winter, we really have to wrap up whatever we're going to do with the bond money in order to meet our obligation to spend it within the timeframe that we were given. So there are going to be, um, Michelle hit on a couple of them, but, uh, from here forward, um, the first thing, we'll be adopting the final budget and, uh, as Michelle said, uh, we will put in all the grants, we will update, uh, if there's any, um, finalization of negotiations. We will update, um, the numbers for any of the other grants that we have applied for or state money. Um, we have the cash flow that we've talked about. Uh, the other thing is, is that, um, we will need to do in November, a truth in taxation hearing this year because, um, the increase for the following year is 5%. And since we do get a little bit of new construction, not a lot, that would put us over. So in order to be able to get that revenue, um, we'll need to go through a truth in taxation hearing, which is simply you, uh, as a board, adopting tentative levy and then having it, uh, putting it in the paper and having a public hearing. So it's a formality, um, to go, uh, to go through, so the public knows what we're doing. Um, if you followed recently as far as projections go beyond this year, um, inflation is coming down a little bit, but I expect it'll still be above 5% at the end of the year. So most likely, when we get the information in January, um, the CPI for the following year will still be 5%. The catch 22 for that will be, um, some of our contracts will start expiring in the next few years. So most of our contracts and what most vendors, um, look at when they talk to schools is CPI. Now, they didn't want to do that three years ago, four years ago, where it was always 1%. But now that it's 5%, they want to talk CPI, okay, because they want those increases. So overall assessment, um, you're in good shape, okay? Everybody's done their due diligence. Um, and remember that in that 287,000, there's $100,000 with the contingencies. We always put it in there because there's, you know, if, just in case, um, it's mainly for like transportation and a couple of those funds where you never know if a child's going to move in and you're going to need transportation and it's going to blow the budget, but... So if you take that out, it would be at about 190,000, which is a number we were kind of shooting for, okay? Any questions on?
Not a question, just a reminder for ourselves, for anyone listening. So we know that the state mandates 25% operating a year annual operating for reserves.
To get the highest, um, score on the profile, yes.
And then many years ago, the board of District 80 determined 33% to be our policy.
Yes.
And right now, where are we?
Um, basically you are over 33%. It's, I didn't do the math, uh, it's 5 million divided by, um, 12. So it's probably about 40% maybe, 42%. So we're in good shape. Any other questions? Again, when we do the final adoption in public hearing, we will, uh, update you on everything. And I also just want to say, um, to the board that, um, this was a really nice budget process this year. Um, in this, in the, because, uh, both Kenny and Michelle, uh, took the lead on the expenses on all the educational pieces and did a really nice job doing that. So we worked as a team collaboratively, so they're all up to speed and, uh, they did a really nice job. And I just wanted to let you know that.
I'll take a quick second. Craig, thank you for your work on it, Kenny, your work, and Michelle. And we're in good shape, right? We heard our financial consulting say we're at about 40%. Like Frank mentioned, uh, state mandates 25, our district policy says 33, we're at 40. The problem, the issue may face that Michelle mentioned, it's not a District 80 problem, it's a Cook County issue. And District 80, along with other districts, are going to incur that same type of scenario. So thank you everybody for your information and your work for that. Moving on to our administrative reports. I'll turn it right back over to you, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you. Uh, I first want to, uh, just thank the Norwich and the Harvard Max Fire Department, Police Departments, for our national night out. I guess we should have put that in celebrations tonight. What a great night that was, uh, this segment. Um, and I know this is something that we began planning actually in 2020. So it was great to finally have that meeting happen. And I think they're projecting, uh, 1,200 to 1,400 people there. So, um, I think it's more like about a, a great night. Just want to thank them, uh, the Norwich, Harvard, and the Department of Law. Um, I want to also just mention our new teachers and our mentor program has begun. Uh, new teachers, there are 14 teachers in Norwich District 80, and I mentioned some of them tonight. Um, and we're really happy to have them with us and happy to have our veteran teachers working as mentors with our new teachers. Want to mention some buildings and grounds projects that we have going on tonight. You'll see on the agenda, I am asking for approval of an elevated project. This is not a project that we have discussed and that I'm offering to you action on. This actually came out of nowhere. However, it is something that we need to have done. The hydraulic oil line on the, the elevator at Giles is leaking. In the, um, in the pit down below, you know, it's full of oil. So we do need to have, uh, cooling come out, remove the elevator, replace the hydraulic lift line, clean out of the pit, um, that's down on the beat there, and then put that back together. What you can see from the agenda this tonight is about almost $10,000. That is, um, not something we expected, but it is one of those repairs we have contingency for that we, um, we need to, uh, we asked the board to get completed tonight. We also are going to be looking at some additional fences and, uh, fobbing some additional doors as part of our correct assessment team, uh, study that we've been working on. Um, the city of Illinois has asked us to every year submit a threat assessment plan. It's actually not new. This year, however, that we need to turn it into our regional office of education, which is West 40. Um, so we're turning that in and asking you to approve that tonight. We'll turn that in tomorrow. And part of that looks at where we're vulnerable on safety. One of the areas, uh, that we found of vulnerability are fences to, um, so for example, in this building, in the south block, we would be looking at a fence that can be locked during the day and then has a push through that, uh, people can go through if they need to leave in an emergency situation. However, people can't get into the fence area. Safety on the north side over here, and then there are several areas at Giles we're looking at. So that is something I'll be bringing to you in the future, some approval for some fences and door fobs. The, uh, all the staff has these little, um, these little door fobs. We have some doors at Giles that, um, could potentially, uh, people may feel they want to put a door shutter in there. We don't want any situations of door shutters, so we are looking at putting in a few more door fob systems on our storage. We are going to bring to you in September, um, Mr. Rossi and Mr. Sellers will be at our meeting about 4:00 hours. This is our very large plumbing project that we've been talking about for the last few months. Uh, we had the removal of asbestos this summer. Both buildings are cleared, um, all of the, uh, tests have been done, everything is, it came out beautifully. But we are looking at then, um, now replacing the old galvanized pipe, galvanized pipe in all the runs, the long runs in the hallways and put, will be adding the powder. They'll run, um, in the evenings and we'll just run that pipe right next to the other pipe until at some point it'll tie down and be there. We'll be bringing in an RFP for that in September. That is a, one of a very large project that we've got. Estimated to be about $350,000, $400,000 for both of those. Tonight, we're bringing Policy Update 109. Policy Update 109, which I know you have, very large, I think it's 169 pages of policy. Um, most of them, I outlined them all for you, most of them are just because part of the process is five-year run-up and we look at policy every year to see if they have the right footnotes, the right pace, um, hurdles. So most of them are not anything that has to do with the actual policy. Anything that has to do with policy, I highlighted for you, but there isn't anything in there that was a concern of mine at all. Uh, as, as Dr. Schilling mentioned, we did receive word that we continue to be tier two in our EDF funding. As you mentioned, $300,000 of new money for the year. We also will be reaching out to the community soon because we're, um, joining a partnership with Mort Marviredom on a project that... on a project that's called Chicago Area Trees Initiative. They're going to be coming out and planting, well, they're not going to be planting. We're going to actually ask for some community members to come in on a weekend and plant some more trees. Seven different trees, we use to run magazines. Super fun, nice thing for families to get involved in, we're really excited about that. Today, unfortunately, I was not able to give you your board packet because I just received it, but I did put a copy on your desk of the enrichment program for Lee. And if you go page in, you'll find the Giles enrichment program. There are new classes that are being offered for our enrichment program this year. And I know we had a meeting with Norwich Park Districts that I believe Mr. Borri is going to speak more about during committee report. I do want to just point that out to you, that you have a copy. One other thing that I think is really important for everyone to know is they are going to be offering an early release care on Mondays days for Lee School students. They're calling it a fun, fun Wednesday. And they're going to be offering parents that may have some difficulty with our early release time at Lee, they're going to be offering them to be able to stay. I think they're looking at two hours, but I haven't seen the final proposal of the program yet. All of that should be coming out in flyer, send home our first tracks on Friday, and then enrollment will start in November. I'm excited about all those things. I think it'll be a really nice opportunity for our parents who may struggle with their early release monsters. And that is my report.
Any questions or comments from the board? Frank does, does that have anything for Giles yet for early release programs?
They said that if there is a need, they would look at that program. They don't feel there is going to be a need. But they will if we have some feedback unless you, so in the flyer they're putting out, people would have to contact them directly.
Anyone else? Okay, Joe, thank you. We'll turn it over to Mr. Peter Masters, Room Director of Special Ed for his report.
Thank you. Want to make sure that I again emphasize our celebration of our new, excuse me, special education staff, paraprofessionals, teachers, social workers and the like. We've actually had a great opportunity to get in some really much needed training. We've been able to actually go over relevant paperwork necessary for that, our program to house all of that paperwork and raise IEP. And we've also learned how to conduct facilitated IEPs, which are the process that is recognized by ISB. It's often, it brings a much more collaborative and diverse conversations to those IEP meetings. So that's, it's been great to get everybody in on board with that. Some opportunities that we have been working on the last month or so has been the IDEA grant that has been submitted to ISB for initial review. This is just the initial review of things. There will, there will highly likely be an additional amendment process as we go through and update information as we did. In addition, Dr. Ramio and I have been able to go and observe a outside facility to see ABA services for one of our students. It's been great to actually get some very specific strategies that will help to facilitate it very successfully here for the student as we go forward. We're able to collaborate very closely with the board certified media grad analysts as well of that. We have been able to also get out infant tech trainings, which Infant Tech is our company that offers our mandated trainings from ISB. So that includes bloodborne pathogens, students with exceptionalities, anaphylactic shock, all of these. These have been sent out to all new members as well as returning members. So that will be extended, there's an extended timeline for that of October 1st to make sure that all that training is completed. I have had the opportunity also to collaborate with West 40, our Regional Office of Education, in order to help facilitate our upcoming professional development on August the 24th. This includes a provision where we're actually been talking a lot about applying some of our skills on how to read some of the IEPs, the IEP summaries, and also working within that co-teaching model and how we can kind of support that, whether or not they have a co-teacher in that classroom at that given time. Just making sure that collaborative process is ongoing and communicative. The last thing would be the co-teaching partnerships have also been meeting. They have been meeting outside of our hours for about three hours leading up to the school year. We have been focused on specifically not only identifying our students who may have exceptionalities in the general education classroom, but who may also require certain types of accommodations, any kinds of successful interventions that we can kind of provide to start the year off right. We have, I have been able to see in several of the partnerships that they have been planning their lesson cycles already, which is wonderful. They're actually ahead of the ball with some of those co-teaching partnerships that will be working on the 24th. And a few have even started talking about specifically how the models of co-teaching are going to work within their classroom this upcoming school year. That's my report.
Anything on the board? Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to our building principals, Dr. Ramio and Lee. Anyone first?
All right, so as I had mentioned earlier, Mrs. Carnell had officially joined us on August 8th, so eight days in and at the first board meeting, so congratulations. And I'm excited that she's joined us here at Lee and we've been meeting and kind of going through the onboarding process. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff to kind of get active and admit coming into an assistant principal role. The administrative team participated in a two-day professional development in July with Solution Tree. And that focused on our professional learning community, which is something that we're really looking to tighten up this school year. And it was in both of the, both of our school improvement plans, and it's something that we're really excited about. We think that work will really benefit our, our staff and our students. So we have released all of our classroom placements as well as some like initial back-to-school information, things like a supply drop-off that'll be happening on Monday. That's 5:15 to 6:45. So we hope to have a good turnout, get everyone stopping in. We're also going to have some, we've got a popcorn machine that's going to be popping away throughout the night, so it should be a nice event. We also have our kindergarten orientation that's planned for, I believe, August 31st. And some additional details that went out about preschool, about parents kind of joining for that first day. And all of that was released in the weekly tracks. And we'll be sending that out again on Friday with some additional information. And right now, we're just in the process of those final preparations as we kind of get ready for the school year. And we are really looking forward to getting the ground running on August 24th and seeing everyone on the 20th. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Mr. Jack, Giles?
Again, we'd like to welcome our new staff to Giles School. We're really excited that they have chosen to join us. So we're looking forward to an exciting year. Recently released a letter last, last week, a mailing, which included a welcome back letter, a student schedule, meet the teacher flyer, supply drop-off, and then also save the dates for student-led conferences, which will be coming up in November. Building updates, again, I'd like to echo what President Plaza said. Our fifth grade hallway was painted white, gold and purple. It looks outstanding. So I'm excited to, I'm excited to see the students walk in and see them. We're going to continue on with our painting schedule and continue on once we get some of the other projects done to get school started. Our main office expansion of the assistant principals' office and soundproofing has, looks great. We've been able to move back into the offices at Giles and begin preparing our, preparing the building for staff and students. Our library is looking outstanding. All new LED lighting, new ceiling tiles. Current, they're working on their flooring and then carpeting will be done, working this week on finishing the flooring and then getting the carpeting. Our bookshelves have all been painted black to match. We have a gray-black theme, so the library is going to look really great for our students. And we're actually calling it the Library Media Center, LMC. Our furniture, due to supply chain issues, is going to be delayed, but we're hoping for the furniture to arrive end of September, sometime in beginning of October. Again, I'd like to thank our maintenance department, Mr. Pat Rossi, Mr. Derek Sellers, Mike Bruno, Tony Cardone, Dylan O'Shea, and our summer high school helpers. Again, fantastic job. They're working extremely hard getting everything ready. We are preparing for our teachers. Next week, we do have our Teachers Institute Day. So Monday, we'll be doing a, some team building activities with our staff to get them ready for an outstanding school year. On Tuesday of next week, we're going to do some PLC training, as that is our district focus this year, our goal with our staff. And then on Wednesday, we are going to have work with West 40, Suzie D's and Mr. Peter Masters, and working on relationships and collaboration professional development. So we're super excited that we can get going on all these, on all these wonderful activities for our staff. Another thing I'd like to point out, because it comes very quickly, the school year for athletics, boys softball and girls softball and cross-country, that begins right away. In my mailing, I did release also, I did send out a blast email. Boys tryouts will be on Monday, August 29th for boys softball. The fee is $132 for a check made up to Norwich School District 8. If your child is, does make the team, the district will cash the check. If the child does not make the team, the check will be returned. Girls softball will take place for tryouts, will be Friday, August 26th after school. And the same thing, the fee is $132. Cross-country is a no-cut sport, so anyone interested in participating in cross-country, come on out. And the fee for that is $66. One very important note that we want to make sure we mention is sports physicals need to be on file. A sports physical is good for 13 months. So we need to make sure that students that are interested in participating, that must have a physical, a current physical on file in the nurse's office to be able to try out and participate on the team. So we're looking forward to getting everything started, and that concludes my report.
Board, anyone have any comments? So going back to your 20 seconds meeting, Bob, I know the board is going to be joining you guys. We'll be doing some grilling that day. I know some of the board members took out the work to be there to help offer the teachers back to school. So we look forward to seeing that twice.
Yes, thank you.
Disziplinary reports, I don't think we have any. Okay, monthly staff report?
You'll see today in the agenda that we have some last minute, my and he have some also some last minute presentations. Looking at all those after-class sessions today and our final action item section. We are still, we're fully staffed right now for our teachers, but we are still looking for preparation. And that's it, I don't want to stop.
Okay, we got a board committees. First one is our board policy development. As mentioned earlier, and you'll see later on in consent agenda, policy 109 is on the second reading. We'll have an update to that policy. Other than that, outside of 109, nothing to report. Building the rounds?
Not much. Eager to see this Giles Library and Media Center. We heard a lot about it. Excited. The Lee Cafeteria also has been renovated, eager to see that. And always painted all that. You know, you mentioned to me about the elevator and it reminded me how upon getting on the board, Lou and I experienced new to the building grounds getting the lifts here at Lee. And one thing to know is that while you get a bill for something like $9,000 to fix an elevator, you think, geez, does it really have to be that much? Well, the catch is the manufacturer of the elevator, you can contact them and they tell you, your area service developer, this is who you call. And that pretty much is the service company that services it. So when they come and saying you're going to pay this much, you don't really go to other, other businesses that elevators are obsessed. They can fix this, doesn't work that way. So it's a shame, we have to, and it's unexpected, but I don't see how to get around it. We have to have the elevator. Other than that, I'm hearing from other people, other in the grounds, the actual workers, the summer projects are going well. And eager to, as the year goes on, discuss what we can do with the classrooms. I know we started to talk about how to make each classroom better, more uniform to each other, better furniture, things like that, at a reasonable pace. But we'll see about that. That's it.
Board? Okay, thank you. Communications?
No, thank you.
Buying demands, I think we heard a lot earlier in the presentation. Anybody got any?
No, we just have a meeting September 14th to review final numbers before we decide to.
September 14th. Negotiations, as mentioned a little bit in the presentation, just an update for those that even haven't been here. From April 11th through August 1st, we are negotiating here, contractual year. We've met seven times with union and under contract dogs. Our next scheduled meeting will be number eight, is scheduled for August the 29th. And I have an update further than that, I'll give it to you post that. Education, parent, teacher advisory, and behavioral are as needed. To my knowledge, there has been no meeting scheduled, so there's nothing to report in those three areas. Move on to our department, I'll turn it over to them.
Sure. We met on July 21st and the purpose of this meeting was just kind of get a recap of, of the after-school programs and share some feedback. Overall, we both felt it was successful. As Michelle mentioned, the first session will be mailed out on Friday. We are committed to five sessions. One of the biggest topics and concerns that we wanted to talk about, because these are funded by grants, eventually they're going to run out and it's going to be, you know, there's going to be a charge to it. So we felt to start getting that price out there so parents can see it. I know, I think Norwich Park will be submitting the session and redlining, crossing out the cost, but just so parents can see what the future might bring with what it would cost. So we agreed to the first two sessions fully funded, just to see how participation is. If that grows, we might have to make some decisions because unfortunately the money is going to run out at some point. So we projected to do five sessions if the participation stays the same. But if it grows, we'll have to discuss further how we want to move forward with that. That's pretty much it on that. We also, this year, will have to start looking at the preschool rental, because it will be up after this year, so.
Yeah, the project expected to be here most.
Yeah, so we'll have to start those conversations as well. That is it from that.
Board? Okay, thank you for that. Move on to consent agenda. I ask the board to consider the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Louis Frank? Kenny, roll call please.
Mrs. Blawa, yes. Mr. Mizana?
Yes.
Mr. Mountents?
Yes.
Mr. Borri?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Carries. I'm going to add, I ask the board to consider a motion to approve the tentative fiscal year '23 in our school district meeting budget. Any discussion? I ask for a motion to approve the tentative fiscal year '23 in our school district meeting budget. A motion. Lorenzo, second. Chris? Kenny, roll call?
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Borri?
Yes.
Mrs. Blawa?
Yes.
Mr. Mountents?
Yes.
Mr. Mizana?
Carries. I ask the board to consider a motion to approve the Norwich School District meeting threat assessment proceeding. Any discussion? I'll ask for a motion to approve the Norwich School District assessment proceeding. Chris, second. Kenny, roll call?
Mr. Borri?
Yes.
Mrs. Blawa?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Mizana?
Yes.
Yes. Carries. I ask the board to consider a motion to approve the consolidated district plan for the 2022 through 2023 school year. Any discussion? I'll ask for a motion to approve the consolidated district plan for the 2022 through 2023 school year. Frank, seconded by Maria. Kenny, roll call please?
Mr. Mizana?
Yes.
Mr. Mountents?
Yes.
Mrs. Blawa?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Mr. Borri?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Carries. I ask the board to consider a motion to approve the COVID-19 guidance for the 2022 through the 2023 school year. Discussion on that? I'll ask for a motion to approve the COVID-19. I'll ask for a motion to approve the COVID-19 guidance for the 2022 through 2023 school year. Motion. Frank, second by Maria. Roll call, can you?
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Blala?
Yes.
Mr. Mountson?
Yes.
Mr. Mizana?
Yes.
Carries. I ask the board to consider a motion to approve board policy updated issue 109 on its secondary. Discussion? I'll ask for a motion to approve board policy updated issue 101 on its secondary. Motion. Something. Frank, second by Chris. Roll call, please?
Mr. Mountson?
Yes.
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Mr. Mizana?
Yes.
Mrs. Blala?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
And then carries. Moving on to our discussion items, I'm going to turn over this to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you have a presentation from Illinois Sex Standards. Illinois Sex Health Sex Standards. Please just give me a moment to pull that up. Thank you. So as you might be aware, Illinois signed onto the National Sex Standards and named them Illinois Learning Standards for Comprehensive Personal Health and Safety and Sexual Health Education. The national health standards are not new, but what is new is that Illinois has adopted these standards. What's really important for everyone to hear and understand is District 80 has not taken any action on these standards as of yet. We have some options of what we can do for these standards, and I will go through all of that with you at the end of this presentation. So I will present to you where the standards came from, what the standards are, what we currently do in the district, and then what our options will be in the months to come. So Public Act 102002 is where Illinois had set forth to teach comprehensive personal health and safety and comprehensive sexual health education. This act was signed by ISB, the Illinois State Board of Education. Basically took the national sex standards, which the board had looked at last year at one point, and adopted them for Illinois. Sex education in Illinois is optional for districts. So please note that it is optional, and at any point, parents can opt out of sex education. Here is it kind of broken down into several different areas. Talks about consent and healthy relationships, anatomy and physiology, puberty and adolescent sexual development, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation and identity, sexual health, interpersonal violence, and age inappropriate content is throughout kindergarten through 12th grade. So here is District 80, we're already in kindergarten eighth grade standards. They're broken up into three different bands, which we will go through specifically. Those bands are kindergarten through second grade, third through fifth grade, and then, yes, sixth through. Districts have discretion over whether or not they want to provide comprehensive personal health and safety education and comprehensive sexual health education to students. Students are not required to participate in any class or course. Parents may opt out of students. So if the district does decide to adopt the sex standards, which is the policy from Policy 108, 6.60, then parents still have the option of opting out. District shall provide a curriculum, scope and sequence to parents, and post it on the website. And districts are, it is acceptable to have outside presenters to present the material. I'm going to go through each of the bands with you. We're not going to read each thing, but I will kind of sum up for you, and I will certainly put this presentation on our website tomorrow. People can take a look at their, look at theirs as well. Some of the consent and healthy relationship things are things that are, are good things that we probably even do well with. Characteristics of a friend, something we cover. But it goes into a little bit more on your personal health and safety in this area. Does talk about body anatomy, personal boundaries. It does define consent, but it talks about consent in an age appropriate, meaning my body. No one should touch my body. I don't get the permission to touch my body. So it's not consent in the way of sexual consent, but it's consent in I have the right to say who's going to touch me in this kindergarten to second grade level. Talks about families and defines what families look like, meaning a mom and a dad, two moms, two dads, to all the different ways that families can look. Talks about the personal boundaries and showing respect for other people's boundaries. And then explaining respect for all different families. In every one of the categories, you will see it talks about respect. It talks about respecting for people who are in all the different kinds of families that can be seen. Healthy ways to respect your friends. The anatomy and physiology part of kindergarten through second grade does go through medically accurate names for all body parts, including genitals. Gender identity and expression, defines gender and how that is different than gender identity, and goes into gender role stereotypes, and discusses the ways that people express gender and talks about stereotypes of gender. Interpersonal violence for kindergarten through second grade discusses child sexual abuse, identifies behaviors. This should be noted, this is an area that is covered under Aaron's Law. And regardless if District 80 decides to adopt the standards or not, we are required to continue Aaron's Law under here. Aaron's Law talks about good touches and bad touches, and trusted adults that you can talk to. Aaron's Law does also come to opt out for parents every year. We do have some parents that opt out of Aaron's Law. The next part talks about uncomfortable situations, bullying, teasing, sexual abuse. As I mentioned with Aaron's Law, as well as with the sex health standards, they're talking about trusted adults. Who can you go talk to if you need to go talk to someone? Talks about demonstrating ways to treat people with dignity and respect, and how to have those trusted conversations in uncomfortable situations. And also, when the sexual health side defines reproduction, explains all living things have the capability to reproduce. Again, this is at a grade level specific vocabulary. So the kindergarten would look different than the second grade if that is, if these are things we adopt. Third through fifth grade, you'll see the same kind of categories, and you'll see a lot carryover. Now here we get a little deeper into healthy and unhealthy relationships with friends. Still talking about our trusted adults, and still talking about our personal boundaries. Anatomy and physiology is talking about human reproduction systems, your external and internal body parts, and how they function. Sexual identity and orientation goes a little deeper, but some of the same stuff we saw in the K2 where we are clear on sexual orientation, the difference between the sexual orientation and gender identity is getting clearer, and ways to promote dignity and respect for all people. Oops. Well, that was funny. I couldn't do that without if I tried. I have no idea why I dropped that presentation. I apologize. Give me a moment, please. Third through fifth grade talks about puberty and adolescent sexual development. That's the first time you see this. We didn't see this in K2. Here we're talking about physical, social, emotional changes that happen during puberty. There's six different levels of your body that changes, and starts to talk about those. It talks about how puberty prepares your body for potential reproduction. Explains human sexual development, hormones, the role of hormones. Again, we'll see that touchback with our trusted adults, and then our plan for maintaining personal hygiene. Gender identity, we go deeper into the difference between what sex you're assigned at birth and gender identity, and how that might be different. Explain the difference between transgender, non-binary gender, expansive gender, all the different areas that people can identify. And it also goes through the expression of the genders, and how people express what their gender is, as well as talking about the stereotypes, the trusted adults, and ways to promote dignity and respect for all genders. Sexual health, it starts to talk about sexual intercourse, human reproduction, and explains a range of ways a pregnancy can occur. Range of ways meaning pregnancy that happens naturally and pregnancy that happens not naturally, IVF or temple. Talks about STIs, which are sexually transmitted infections, including HIV. Goes into interpersonal violence. Again, some of these things are covered under Aaron's Law, defining sexual abuse, sexual harassment, domestic abuse. This goes a little deeper than Aaron's Law, but kind of with some of the same concepts. Talks about what a person can do if they've been sexually abused, describes ways to promote dignity and respect, and talks a little bit about people who are survivors of sexual abuse. Now we're in the last band for District 80, which is sixth grade through eighth grade. Sixth grade through eighth grade, we're going to see the same areas, but of course, it's going to go much deeper into detail on consent and healthy relationships, talking about unhealthy, healthy relationships, power differences between age and gender. Here we start to talk a little bit more about friendships and relationships, romantic relationships, sexual relationships, defining sexual consent. Of course, in a much different level than we would have seen in the kindergarten through second grade level. Here they talk about peers and family and media, and how that all twines into what people's beliefs are and what their expectations are in relationships. Consent in healthy relationships, we see the use of technology and what social media plays on relationships. Looks at consent to sexual activity, communication, how you communicate personal boundaries, and then, of course, what unhealthy, healthy relationships, and how you can go to trusted adults. Anatomy and physiology goes through the human reproduction system, reproductive system, excuse me, including your external and internal body parts, their functions. It does go through intersex and all the different parts of bodies for males and females. Puberty and sexual and adolescent sexual development does accurately, and talks about puberty and what happens to your body, and what happens in the sexual health side of puberty. Gender identification, going a little deeper now and analyzing how peers and family and other people intersect identities and can influence each other and their beliefs and their attitudes about sexual gender, gender identity, gender roles, gender expression. We talk a little bit about medically accurate sources about gender, gender identity, gender expression. Again, some of the same things we saw in the third through fifth grade, just going a little more analytical. Communicate respect for others, and then making a plan for dignity and respect for her. Sexual orientation, identity in sixth through eighth grade, definition of sexual orientation, and that most people have a sexual orientation. Talk about your peers, your media, your family, society, and how they look at influence and look at our attitudes and our beliefs. Identify sexual identity and a range of identities related to sexual orientation. Communicate respect for all people, and then making a plan again to respect all sexual orientations in a school community. Interpersonal violence, again, you see some of this in Aaron's Law, talking about sexual violence, sexual assault, incest, rape, domestic violence, coercion, and dating violence, sex trafficking, identifying your trusted adults, and then identifying the strange a person can use if they are feeling unsafe. Sexual health, health. They are defining vaginal oral and anal sex, describing there are many methods of short and long-term contraceptives. Not handing anything out, but does, what they do, explain what they are. Talking about how alcohol and drugs can influence sexual decision-making. Going through states and federal laws related to the age of minors and sexual health. Identifying the STIs, what are those sexually transmitted infections, and what do they mean. They also talk, discuss prenatal care, and identifying medically accurate sources of information about prenatal care. Talk about ways to communicate on how you can talk about sexual behavior and identify factors that are important when deciding to engage in sexual behaviors. Continuing in sexual health, it's to make a plan to eliminate or reduce risk of pregnancy. Barriers that can be methods to pregnancy. Talking about pregnancy testing, talking about different signs of pregnancy, and describing symptoms and lack therefore of impacts of STIs. Comparing and contrasting behaviors such as abstinence and determining potential risk of pregnancy. And talking about the state and federal laws that relate to minors and sexual health. Self-esteem, body image. So those are all of the areas that the state has approved or has asked us to make a decision on. So where are we right now? What do we currently offer right now in District 80? So District 80 offers in fifth through eighth grade, a program that's called CANDOR Health. You may have had this program when you were younger, it's been over a long time. And our fifth through eighth graders in health class are just getting this program. There is information that is sent out through the school in an opt-out form that parents can opt out if they so choose. The information that is sent home currently does have very explicit on what's being taught, does have a link that brings parents to the CANDOR website where parents can read all about what the spoken sequence is, can find out exactly what videos are being shown, exactly what areas there are, and I'll go through what those are in a moment. Again, parents have an option of opting out. If you look here, there are numbers from 21, 22, of our number of parents that did opt out. In fifth grade, we had 14 students, sixth grade, four, seventh grade, three, and in eighth grade, two. Students who were opted out did receive an actual learning option for that time that these students were involved in the CANDOR Health program. How this works is there is a scripted program that is online that the health teacher facilitates with the students. It could range from three to five days that the students are going through this program with the health professional who is certified to teach health. Here are what our current programs are. In fifth grade, we use the program that's called Puberty 1. Puberty 1 is taught in gender-specific groupings, so the boys are separated from the girls during this fifth grade course. They talk about the age's physical and emotional changes that occurred during puberty, including changes to the reproduction systems, male and female anatomy, and harassment and sexual harassment are introduced and defined using age-appropriate scenarios. That is currently being taught at Child's right now. We are, 14 of our students from fifth grade opted out of last year and received a different health project. In sixth grade, we currently are teaching Puberty 2, which includes, again, the age physical and emotional changes that occur during puberty. Goes into those a little bit deeper, and includes changes in the reproduction system, goes into hormones, changing gender roles, gender expression, and forms of communication as well as sexting and online sex. In seventh grade, our seventh graders, I'm sorry, let me just go back for a moment. In seventh grade, our seventh graders, oh, I'm sorry, let me just go back for a moment. We had four students in sixth grade opt out of this program, this passion. In seventh grade, human reproduction and embryology. We're talking about here, the review of physical and emotional changes that happen during puberty, changes to the reproduction systems such as menstrual cycles, erections, ejaculations, fertilization, embryology, and the process of labor. And I'll cover that at seventh grade. And three students were opted out of that last year. Then teen sexual health is in eighth grade. Teen sexual health covers anatomy, forms of sexual contact, consent, pregnancy, sexual transmission, the STIs. The pregnancy, they talk about how a sperm cell meets with an egg. They talk about which causes pregnancy, the most common STIs that can be transmitted, viral, bacterial, infectious. Then last year, two of our students were opted out of that. So what do we do now? So we have some options. We can adopt all the grade levels standards. And at that point, we would need to, we would need to discuss how we're going to present them. We can have an outside company come in, as with Candor, if we chose to present them all. Or we can adopt a curriculum, which currently we don't have in kindergarten through fourth grade. We can adopt some of the standards. We can continue to do what we've been doing in fifth or eighth grade with that opt-out option if we choose. We can adopt none of the standards. We can just say, District 80, 6.60, we're not going to adopt any of our health safety standards, our health sub standards. What we can't do is we can't teach anything that is opposing to the standards. So any information that is opposite of what the standard states, we can't do. We also cannot mandate that all students receive the instructions. Parents always have the right to opt their students out. Our next steps, we should familiarize ourselves with the standards and the expectations. As I stated, I will put this presentation on our website, so people can be familiar with that. You can also Google Illinois State Sex Standards and you will get even more information than I just stated. And then in September, we have to, we will adopt any or all or any standards. Make a decision about that in an action item. Will then communicate with our parents and what we're doing moving forward. If we are adopting the state standards, we will have to discuss how we're going to cover it up, if that is an outside company, as I mentioned with Candor, fifth through eighth grade, or if we're going to be having our show do that. And then we need to inform the Illinois State Board of Education if the standard instruction will take place, whether instruction was provided by a teacher, a consultant, or a community, the number of teacher students that are receiving it, the number of students that are opting out, and how long the instruction is. Please note, this does not affect any of our state or local funding. So if we decide to opt out of any or all the standards, that is not a situation where we will be at risk of not receiving any funding. This is completely at the district's discretion and then further at the parent's discretion. Any questions?
Moving on in September?
September.
I have a question.
Let me take the questions.
I didn't decide. It's okay. See, this is how there's been a ton of damage lately with our kids and government and what, you know, they're supposed to learn. This is a huge overstep, in my opinion. What has been done, say we opt out of this curriculum, they have injected during my daughter's homeschool week, the i-ready courses in third grade. They were talking about in one of her reading assignments, how Sally Ride was the first LGBTQ female pastor. It's being injected people into our kids through the assignments. And this is clearly a case where it's up to the parents to teach this, you know, how to respect other people that are different from us. It's up to us. It's not up to the government. It's not up to schools. What are we doing to ensure the curriculum isn't sliding that material into our, you know, educational path?
No, that's a good question. In this, in this situation with the sex standards we presented tonight, it is up to the district and then further up to the parents. So even if the district does decide, or any district decides to go ahead and follow the standards, parents have no way to opt out of it. But I do have a question, isn't asking that, I just want to make sure that part is clear. As far as what is being made in the curriculum, I am not aware of that particular situation, but certainly something I would have to look into and do some research on. Currently, right now, I know I'm never going to answer for that. I certainly will do that.
Thank you, Michelle.
The second item I have a discussion on is I would like to propose next month that we move the November board meeting. Currently, right now, on our approved board meeting list dates, the November board meeting is listed for November 8th. That is the election day. So I don't think that would be advisable for us to have a board meeting on election day. I think when we created that time two years ago, I think we were thinking we needed the time for the tentative levy. However, as I have written down for you in the memo, we certainly have enough time to move the board meeting to November 15th for our levy. Also with our truth and textation that needs to take place in November for passing of the center. We certainly have enough time for adopting the tentative levy on November 15th, having it published publicly, and then holding our final hearing for the levy on the 30th of the center. So next month, I'd love to bring that to you as an action item to approve the change in that. That's all I have to mention.
Any concerns from the board on that thing changing today? Any more comments in general? I'll ask the board to consider motion to adjourn the full session to discuss the 21th viewpoint of compensation discipline, performance for dismissal of specific employees, collective bargaining matters, and to review post-session minutes. Any discussion? Now, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the full session to discuss the appointment, viewpoint, compensation, discipline, performance for dismissal of specific employees, collective bargaining matters, and to review post-session minutes. All the quarters will do like the last session. Frank, second, Chris. Can you do a call?
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Mr. Mazzano?
Alright, so that carries below the time of 18:10 PM. We will immediately close, and I would say about 8:40, 8:45, somewhere around there. Okay, we're back in open session at 10:53 PM. Moving on, personnel action. Consider the approval of contract for Allison Cornell, Assistant Principal of the new school for the 2022 through 2022 school year. Discussion. Okay. I'll ask for a motion for a contract for Allison Cornell, Assistant Principal of the new school for the 2022 through 2022 school year. Second. Louis, roll call, please.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Okay, carries. Consider the approval of contract for Jack Melphie, District PBIS Court here. Discussion. As for motion to approve the contract for Jack Melphie, District PBIS Court here. Motion. Frank and then Chris, can you do a call?
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano?
Yes.
Carries. Consider the approval of the new school social order date app. Step three, lane four. Discussion. As for motion to approve the new school social order date app. Step three, lane four. Motion. Renzo, followed by Chris, roll call.
Mr. Blazlo? Yes. Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano?
Yeah.
Carries. Ask the board to consider the approval of the new school social order, Jennifer Vonn. Step one, lane one. Discussion. I'll ask for a motion to approve the appointment of new school social worker, Jennifer Vonn. Step one, lane one. Second. Frank, Maria, roll call.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano? Yes. Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Yes. Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Carries. Ask the board to consider the approval of the appointment of Giles School fifth and sixth grade senior teacher, Brian May user. Step one, lane one. Discussion. Motion to approve by Giles School fifth and sixth grade senior teacher, Brian May user. Step one, lane one. Motion. Chris, Maria, roll call, please.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Carries. Ask the board to consider the approval of the appointment of Giles School eighth grade science teacher, Mackenzie Gally. Step one, lane one. Discussion. I need a motion to approve the Giles School eighth grade science teacher, Mackenzie Gally. Step one, lane one. Frank, Chris, roll call, please.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Matheson? Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Carries. Ask the board to consider the approval of District Special and Care Professional, Brianna Santoro. Discussion. I need a motion to approve District Special and Care Professional, Brianna Santoro. Motion. Renzo, Frank, roll call.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Carries. Ask the board to consider the approval of District Special and Care Professional, Patricia Neal. Discussion. Ask for a motion to approve District Special and Care Professional, Patricia Neal. Motion. Chris, Louis, roll call.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano?
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the approval for District Special and Care Professional, Flint Barry. Discussion. Any motion to approve District Special and Care Professional, Flint Barry? Frank? Maria? Roll call.
Mr. Blazlo? Yes. Mr. Mazzano?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Carries. Consider the approval for District Special and Care Professional, Elizabeth Boydman. Discussion. As for motion to approve District Special and Care Professional, Elizabeth Boydman. Motion. Frank, followed by Renzo, excuse me, Renzo followed by Frank, roll call, please.
Mr. Mazzano?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Carries. Consider the approval for District Special and Care Professional, Jessica Kubica. Discussion on that. Ask for motion to approve District Special and Care Professional, Jessica Kubica. Motion. Renzo, Maria, roll call.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Blazlo?
Carries. Ask the board to consider the approval of District Special and Care Professional, Clarabelle Gere. Discussion. Okay, as, ask the board for motion to approve District Special and Care Professional, Clarabelle Gere. Frank, Chris, roll call.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the acceptance of the letter of resignation from Rachel Graham, social worker at Lee School. Discussion. As for motion to accept the letter of resignation from Rachel Graham, social worker at Lee School. Motion. Chris, Maria, roll call.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano?
Yeah.
Carries. Ask the board to consider the acceptance of the letter of resignation from Victoria Mazurko, District Care Professional. Discussion. Any motion to accept the letter of resignation from Victoria Mazurko, District Care Professional? Motion. Chris, Maria, roll call.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Right.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Matheson?
Sure.
Carries. Consider the acceptance of the letter of resignation from Jenny Meisack, District Care Professional. Any discussion on that? I'll ask for motion to accept the letter of resignation from Jenny Meisack, District Care Professional. Motion. Renzo, Louis, roll call.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Carries. Ask the board to consider the acceptance of the letter of resignation from Theodora Corsten, District Care Professional. Discussion. Any motion to accept the letter of resignation from Theodora Corsten as District Care Professional? Second. Maria, Frank, roll call.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Carries. Ask the board to consider the acceptance of the letter of resignation from Leslie Edwards, eighth grade science teacher at Giles. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to accept the letter of resignation from Leslie Edwards, eighth grade science teacher at Giles School. Chris, Louis, roll call.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes. Carries. Consider the acceptance of the letter of resignation from Katys Kafanski, physical education teacher at Giles. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to accept the letter of resignation from Katys Kafanski, physical education teacher at Giles. Chris, Maria, roll call.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Carries. Ask the board to consider the acceptance of the letter of resignation from Angela DiBattino, District Care Professional. Discussion. As for motion to accept the letter of resignation from Angela DiBattino, District Care Professional. Maria, followed by Chris.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano?
Carries. Consider the approval of the reassignment of Christina Grillo, kindergarten teacher at Lee School, to kindergarten special ed until November 30th, 2022. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to accept the reassignment of Christina Grillo, kindergarten teacher at Lee School, to kindergarten special ed until November 30th, 2022. Chris, Frank, roll call.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Carries. Consider the approval of reassignment of Lumiana Gomez, kindergarten special ed teacher at Lee, to first grade, first grade special ed until November 30th, 2022. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to accept the reassignment of Lumiana Gomez, kindergarten special ed teacher at Lee School, to first grade special ed until November 30th, 2022. Second. Chris, Frank, roll call.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano?
Carries. Consider the approval of the reassignment of Josie Giannini, title pair at Lee School, to kindergarten teacher at Lee School until November 30th, 2022. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to accept the reassignment of Josie Giannini, title pair at Lee School, to kindergarten teacher at Lee School until November 30th, 2022. Motion. Second. Louis, Renzo, roll call, please.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo?
Yes.
Mr. Blazlo? Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzano?
Carries. Organizing collection time. I know it's late, but it doesn't work. I know it's late, but it doesn't work. It's higher. You know my tune. It's a seven. I'm more. Yeah, yeah. Hold on, what's the date?
August 16th.
Again, I know it's late. It's very late. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting at 11:04 PM. Second. Frank? Second, and then Renzo, all the papers for the adjournment meeting, please say hi.
Hi.
If there's any opposed, please say no. The meeting is now adjourned.